Just letting you know we are live, Max are on.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's a very short list. To allow. It's Hawaii, Alaska. So conflict for Peter's now for our twentieth anniversary.
Can I get that on the station?
No, none of their things. I've been, I've been to forty-six of the fifty states, Alaska and Hawaii is two of them that I had made. That's why they're on the list. I want to hit all fifty. Yeah, that's, that's up there. Going to Texas or something like that for us. Yeah, we've got a friend. They're just talking around different places. But I know we went. That's where the station is. So why were they here? We have Romania, Hungary, Switzerland, Italy. But we did all those. Went up into Hungary and then across. And then Italy or Switzerland. Well, and we actually got to spend a day in Amsterdam.
Good evening, I have six thirty on the dot, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Steve, would you give us a prayer please?
Heavenly Father, we, we thank you for the opportunity of serving and being a part of this community and we just pray where did you guide us with wisdom and discernment on the decisions we need to make. We thank you for the leadership of the mayor and all the, all these employees that work to, to make our community a great place. Be glorified in this meeting and in our last we pray in Jesus' name.
Amen. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just call the row please.
Councilmember Hall.
Here.
Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember McMinn.
Here.
Councilmember Hefner is out. Councilmember Brooke.
Here.
Councilmember Rubel.
Here.
We have an agenda. Coram and an agenda, or both. We've moved forward in the agenda, first on the agenda tonight is the review and approval of the council meeting minutes from September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, I entertain a motion to preser, to approve as presented.
Motion.
Second.
A motion second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Also on the agenda is October twenty-first, meeting, I entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
We have a motion with a second.
Second.
And we have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Next on the agenda is the department reports and financials, I entertain a motion to approve as they were presented.
Motion.
A motion second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Next on the agenda is planning commission. Apparently I did too.
Good evening, we had a regular meeting and a special meeting last month, so I'm going to go over the regular meeting first. We had this, uh, project for Mason's Corner, they had bought this property and they wanted to split it into four lots. The lots were longer than they were wide, so they were asking for a variance on that as well as a five-foot building setback instead of six-foot. After a lot of discussion from a lot of the neighbors came, uh, we decided to table it.
The, if I remember correctly though, the, the depth of the lot variance was approved.
It was, yes.
Five foot was approved, but then the preliminary plat was tabled.
Correct.
Let's see.
Then we, um, we also had another, yeah, the Davis addition, um, we approved a preliminary plat for that. It's the area that's behind the Dollar General, um, and staff looked at it, had some, uh, comments about drainage. They addressed it and, um, and then we approved a preliminary plat, that should be a final plat on our agenda this month, so. Oh, also asked them to mark the common area as a park.
Right, it won't be on the final plan until they put the streets and everything in.
Right, but still.
Okay, so that was approved as a preliminary plat, then, then you had a special meeting.
Yes, then they came back with the Mason's Corner, uh, preliminary plat with the five-foot setback removed. Um, so we approved, uh, the plat as presented because the neighbors had come to an agreement with the developer and they were fine with the way it was because one of the neighbors was buying the three empty lots for, to keep it country for them. So that, something they worked out amongst themselves and they were all here, I had, um, Brittany call them and let them all know that it was on our agenda again and they were all here and approved of it and the builder also was very generous with them, so, yeah, we, we approved that.
So it was approved as a preliminary plat and then because no, uh, infrastructure is needed, it is also available for final plats, so we need council action to approve this as a final plat. I will tell you, the engineers here, uh, that, uh, there is really actually nothing to be planned in that area, is that correct? There's still plans, it is subdivided, but they're not going to develop it. So, but we still need to do a, a final plat approval for Mason's Corner, so I hear a motion to approve final plat. A motion with a second.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
Um, didn't the five-foot setback come up before at their moon estates?
It did, it did, it was approved back then, uh, a lot of discussion on this time and, um, it's moot point because they came back and took it away and then not going to develop anyway.
Okay.
So is this being set as the four back to where you were at? So it's still being separated into four lots.
Still being separated, and I asked him, and I asked him, why didn't you just draw it where it was the lot with the house and then another lot? And he said it would have cost extra money and he was not going to put that in since he was selling, so.
Yeah, go ahead, come on forward.
Thank you.
Airage yourself.
Yeah, Tristan Phillips, uh, work for Richard Engineering representing the owner. So, we originally brought this in and the neighboring property owners were very upset with, uh, the potential development of that property, which rightfully so, I mean, no one likes change. We talked to them, the owner talked to them and he agreed to sell the three lots to one of the neighbors and he, I guess he's just going to hold on to it, they're not going to, you know, our developers aren't going to build any houses on it. Not sure what's going to happen once, you know, the property changes hands, uh, from that gentleman that's buying, I believe he's, uh, a rather older gentleman, so his kids may get it in the future, but anyhow. But, so they agreed to sell the property, the three lots, to the neighbor at a really discounted rate instead of what he could have made if he ultimately got the plat approved, which he was in every right to do so with it being zoned, how it's zoned, uh, in the city limits. So, he didn't, we already had the plat drawn up like this and he didn't want to go back to the surveyor and spend more money to revise it into, into two lots. Um, because he, like I said, he was taking a, a pretty good cut on the lots to, just to help the neighbors out and be courteous basically. Um, so that's why we left it, is the four lots and, and lot one on the corner, he is still selling, uh, to a single lady. I think she works for Special Olympics. That was already, he had already promised her that before we come to the meeting for the other three lots. The other three lots, you know, he was going to build houses on, um, and sell the existing house on the corner, he had fixed it up and renovated the entire thing. So, uh, that's kind of pretty much the backstory of what all went on with that.
So these other three though, they, they meet all of our requirements for the city as they stand?
They do, they're just more narrow than they are wide and that was the one variance that they needed, but it's double what our lot requirement is when you look at it. Because our lot requirement is, I think, seventy-five hundred, right Gary? Yeah, and they're, you know, more than that, so, almost.
The alternative is developer could have run a house divided seven, had four lots and had another lot in the back with a driveway and to another house in the back and could have done that, but did not. Uh, and then worked well with the neighbors who were, uh, had, had, had issues.
Yep.
And, um, sold it for a good price, I understand.
Yeah, not exactly sure the exact amount they came up, but it was quite a bit less than what he.
Not of our business.
Yeah.
My only fear was is if we, you know, with it being approved, if these weren't to what we're, our standard is for the city, that was just where I was going with it.
But they are.
Yeah, the only, the only variance was, was the three times they are deep, so the city code says you can't have a lot that's more than three times as deep it is wide. Um, not sure, I mean, that's a pretty common code with a lot of different cities. Um, but in this case, uh, the property is so deep and it wouldn't be conducive to put a road in there because there's not that much room. So, I mean, that's really the only way you could, you know, could lot it off with, you know, with, with it being that long, so.
Any further questions? Did I have a, did I have a?
Second.
Do I have a second? All right, we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, and all those in favor say aye. Any opposed, final plat's approved.
Thank you.
And then we also had a update to our zoning map, um, and the mayor pru, uh, presented that and we approved it as presented. We also had a, uh, childcare facility rule that is statewide that needs to be adjusted, so that will be adjusted in our UDO.
It's already adjusted in UDO.
Right.
And I'll, I'll show you all a map a little bit about what we, what we modified on the zoning. But just for your knowledge and what I told, talked to the planning commission was, there was an act passed in two thousand twenty-three that basically says by right, somebody could put a childcare facility in any residential area and have up to sixteen children in there. The only thing that we have to contend with is we can, planning commission can stipulate on parking in ingress and egress of vehicles. There's a little bit of leeway there, but, uh, you know, we, we thought the, uh, state legislature did some odd things last time. This was two thousand twenty-three and we just found out about this from municipal plan, or, or from, um, municipal league. But just, just to make us available, the UDO has been changed to allow for this. Any further questions for Ms. Erin? If not, I entertain a motion to approve her report as presented. Any second? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, thank you.
Thank you.
There was no wastewater advisory committee for September, now we'll move into old business, excuse me. Madam Clerk, if you'll read the title for ordinance two thousand twenty-five twenty?
An ordinance adopting the unified development ordinance, the future land use map and the official zoning map for the city of Ward, Arkansas, amending the city of Ward municipal code and for other purposes.
Counsel, this is our third reading and adoption night, uh, we've also included in this ordinance an effective date of one January, it doesn't make any sense to try to do it in the middle of December. Um, what we have briefed, or I briefed to the, uh, planning commission was a couple of minor changes they approved, uh, change on top is, uh, there's actually a manufacturer up there and I'll show you a picture in just a second. Uh, and then the area in the middle, it was owned industrial and we just changed it to residential, but it just makes more sense for it to be industrial there. And then, uh, there's the area that where Carla's daycare is in that area, change it to neighborhood commercial, uh, allows for that to be in there correctly instead of residential and a lot next to it. And this is the, uh, place up off of Cypress, that is actually a manufacturer, they, they, they manufacture, uh, stop seal for radiators in there. It needs to be industrial. And this is the area I was talking about that was all industrial began with and somewhere along the process we had changed it to residential, right against our road tracks and it just needs to be industrial. And then, um, this area again, Carla's daycare is right there and, uh, change that to neighborhood commercial to allow more, uh, flexibility on what she wants to do with that. To counsel, I entertain a motion to approve ordinance two thousand twenty-five twenty, correction, do we have any public comment?
Yes.
Step forward please.
Uh, Joe Howard, seven eighty Pink Street.
Yes, sir.
Um, I had been in and discussed my business ideas for the property.
Sure.
So many days with, uh, Mr. Meadows and everything and all. And he was giving you a copy of my ideas for businesses there and all and a note on, um, doing it, uh, zone commercial. Because that's what would cup, that's what would cover the, the different business ideas for it.
You came to me and wanted to change it to change it to.
Yeah, I was, I was, I did, it was going to be changed everything and I was going to be residential and I was like, well, I, I, at that, I was like, I'd rather it stay what it is.
In that show, which is what?
Uh, but after discussing everything with Mr. Meadows, uh, I had decided with him and everything with looking at the different ideas for that to, that commercial would cover.
So neighbor, or, uh?
More, more business ideas and everything, yes, sir.
Mr. Meadows, I'll go back, I'll go back. It is this, uh, square area right here.
He, he had given me a list of just ideas he had thought about for his property. Uh, I photocopied of, of the pages out of the UDO draft that would, um, allow what, what would be allowed in each zone. Um, and then he, he's made several visits up here to, back and forth to decide what he actually wanted to do with it. And I think at last check, you wanted your square to be commercial, is that correct?
Neighborhood commercial?
Neighborhood commercial.
Okay.
For just his, just his square.
Square, okay.
Um, the rest of that is, as you said, was industrial and is to remain industrial.
I don't, I know there was a lot of discussion back and forth about that piece of property and I wasn't.
Yes, sir.
I thought industrial was the last thing, okay, so.
I think at last check and, and just be, at last check, you wanted your property, what is it, acre and a half, acre and three quarters, something like that?
It's, this is one point four six, but that can, that also includes like from the center of the road, so it's not really that big, yeah.
Acre and a half plus or minus, um, his square where it hit their house is, they have a residential dwelling on it now. Uh, he wants it zoned as neighborhood commercial and the rest of that was and could remain industrial then, so. But that was just, I gave him the checklist of, or the pages out of the UDO draft as to what could go in what zones and that's what he ultimately decided I think would be best for what he's wanting to do.
Is there any other comment?
So I know the planning commission was not a huge fan of that being changed back to industrial. Um, so if he is going to be okay with neighborhood commercial, can we make that entire area neighborhood commercial instead of industrial?
We could.
Just for continuity, I think it would be better for the zoning map in the future as well, since there's a neighborhood directly across and houses next to it on the other end.
We could, this is the time to do it.
That's my input.
Counsel? I think it's a good idea to, A, his area, that little square down there is his piece of property and the other areas, it was been industrial, but that's not a bad point to move it to neighborhood commercial. Uh, we can do it to that tonight with just a simple motion and we'll take care of it.
But we have, there's a homestead on that where you wanted to go to homestead or.
I'm sorry?
There's a homestead on there already.
There is, there is.
So you need to talk, I think you probably need to contact him.
Well, it won't change what is already in there, this is just the zoning then going forward if they want to move forward and we can also change this, there's a provision in this particular ordinance that within a year if somebody has a problem with what we've done, we can go back and relook it. Um, gives us a year to take a look at that, but.
I think the only change we need to have is Mr. Howard's for residential commercial and leave the other back to industrial like it is.
I could see the, the, uh, need for that going to, uh, neighborhood commercial, it would work either way. Industrial, uh, ties into the industrial portion that's attached to it, it can go either way.
If I could just say that the, the area that you're talking about has been zoned industrial, but it's never been developed as industrial. Uh, since the zoning, that it was industrial, those houses have been developed across the street, so neighborhood commercial would probably be more conducive to that. As far as the home place that's already on there, you're, you're, if you'd moved it from industrial to neighborhood commercial, you're moving it to a lesser zone, which is still more user friendly than.
Industrial.
Than industrial.
That's correct.
So it, it doesn't have to be residential just because there, and it, they're not going to have to move just because it's on commercial. I mean, they're, they've got a residence which is still allowed.
Right.
So.
I make a motion, we amend it to neighborhood commercial.
We have a motion on the floor for changing that large area to neighborhood commercial totally, have a second? Okay, thank you, any further comment? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Sure Mr. Brooke is opposing, motion carries, thank you, and we'll make that change.
I have another question.
Sure.
Um, did, did you guys look at, remember when, uh, the Blackwoods, when, uh, Eagle came about the area that they were doing, where they were doing the vet?
Yeah, that's agriculture.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah.
You need a motion for approval now?
I do need a motion to approve, uh, ordinance two thousand twenty-five twenty, thank you, sir.
Uh, make a motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Any further comments, hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Hall.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember McMinn.
Yes.
Councilmember Brooke.
No.
And Councilmember Rubel.
Yes. Order two thousand twenty-five twenty has been approved on its third reading, I entertain a motion to adopt ordinance two thousand twenty-five twenty with an effective date of one, one of twenty-six.
Motion.
A motion to adopt.
Second.
And a second, roll call please.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember McMinn.
Yes.
Councilmember Brooke.
No.
Councilmember Rubel.
Yes.
Councilmember Hall.
Yes. Orders two thousand twenty-five twenty has been adopted, will become effective one, one of twenty-six, thank you, counsel. Next on the agenda is new business, starting with resolution two thousand twenty-five forty-nine, read the title please.
A resolution of the city council of the city of Ward, Arkansas, accepting a death benefit gift and expressing gratitude for the contribution.
Counsel, this is unusual, we, uh, got notified by our city attorney this, uh, benefit to our animal shelter, uh, and we're delighted to have it and my next resolution will talk about how we'd like to spend it, but first of all, we need to accept this. Any comment? You're not, I entertain a motion to approve. We have a second?
Second.
Any public comment? Hearing none, all, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries, thank you. Next on the agenda is resol, resolution two thousand twenty-five fifty, read title please.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and/or city clerk of the city of Ward to purchase a new vehicle and slide in animal control unit for the city's animal control section.
Counsel, we'd already talked about this being the next, uh, budget and then this came along and this is just really perfect, uh, for the situation. What we want to do is buy them a new vehicle, uh, reuse the existing vehicle, uh, at another location and also buy a slide that we are desperately in need of and been talking about for several years. This helps offset that and then we'll put a, uh, you know, our intention is to put a nice plaque or something that, uh, this is paid in part by this, uh, trust. Any comment? Entertained a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion second, any public comment? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries, thank you. Next on the agenda is the resolution two thousand twenty-five fifty-one, read title please.
A resolution to establish the annual operating budget for the calendar year of two thousand twenty-six.
Counsel, we had a workshop the other day and worked through all this and everybody knows what's going on, I entertain a motion to approve. We have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Any public comment? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Next on the agenda is resolution two thousand twenty-five fifty-two, please read the title.
A resolution to establish the annual ward water and sewer system operating budget for the calendar year of two thousand twenty-six.
Same thing, counsel, I entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Have a second, any public comment? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries, thank you, counsel. Next on the agenda, discussion on to increase the allocated appropriate amount to outfit the latest police vehicle. Uh, when we got the latest one, Chief, you going to come forward? Resolution mod, uh, twenty, two thousand twenty-five twenty-six was modified to reduce the amount of money we could use to outfit it, we've.
Yes, back in August, um, I mean, we all know tariffs, inflation, all the numbers came in and just got some final numbers today, I didn't even get to talk to you because you weren't here and I wasn't here.
Right.
But it comes in right at twenty-two hundred dollars short.
So we need twenty-two hundred hours?
Twenty-two should cover it all after I got the final numbers.
Let's make it twenty-five hundred just to, to the same side.
But that's to keep all the cars uniform, everything's the same, it's just prices going up.
Any discussion?
Is it one individual item or just several items?
It's two or three different items that have changed.
Are these, is this what you and I looked at?
Yes.
Yeah, I make a motion, we approve.
Prove it, twenty-five hundred?
Yeah, whatever, yeah.
Well, I said two thousand, but after, after hearing that, let's go twenty-five hundred?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay.
Yeah, things have gone up, he showed me the, you know, the build costs, so.
So, your motion is to increase it by twenty-five hundred, we have a second? We have a second, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries, thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Next on the agenda is ordinance two thousand twenty-five, um, twenty-five.
An ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-three, clarifying the duties of the office of the mayor for the city of Ward, Arkansas, establishing the salary of the mayor of the city of Ward, Arkansas and for other purposes.
This is the first of a series of several ordinances we'll talk about tonight, establishing the salaries based on the, uh, budget you just passed and these will come effective, uh, one, uh, January two thousand twenty-six. With that, I entertain a motion to approve this on its first reading.
Motion.
A motion with a second, any public comment? Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember McMinn.
Yes.
Councilmember Brooke.
Yes.
Councilmember Rubel.
Yes.
Councilmember Hall.
Yes.
And Councilmember Chapman.
Yes. Order two thousand twenty-five twenty-five has been approved on its first reading, I entertain a motion to suspend the rules for a second and third reading.
Motion.
We have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries, entertain a motion to adopt ordinance two thousand twenty-five twenty-five? We have a motion, we have a second? Roll call please.
Councilmember Brooke.
Yes.
Councilmember Rubel.
Yes.
Councilmember Hall.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember McMinn.
Yes.
Orders two thousand twenty-five has been approved, thank you, counsel, it will go into effect one, January. Next on the agenda is, uh, ordinance two thousand twenty-five twenty-six, read title please.
An ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-four, setting forth the duties of the city clerk for the city of Ward, Arkansas, establishing the salary of the city clerk of the city of Ward, Arkansas and for other purposes.
I'd entertain a motion to put this on its first reading.
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
And a second, roll call please.
Councilmember Rubel.
Yes.
Councilmember Hall.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember McMinn.
Yes.
And Councilmember Brooke. And Councilmember Brooke?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-26 been approved on its first reading. I entertain a motion to waive second and third readings.
Motion.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 2025-26. A motion?
Second.
And a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember McMinn?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooke?
Yes.
And Councilmember Rubel?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-26 been approved. Next on the agenda is ordinance 2025-27. Read the title, please.
An ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance 2024-25, appointing a city attorney for the city of Ward, Arkansas, clarifying the duties of the city attorney, establishing the salary of the city attorney, and for other purposes.
Entertain a motion to approve ordinance 25-27's first reading?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember McMinn?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooke?
Yes.
Councilmember Rubel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-27 has been approved on its first reading. I'd entertain a motion to suspend the rules for a second and a third reading?
Motion.
I'm sorry, public input. My apology. I'm just rocking along. Okay, no, no comments? All right. Have a motion to waive the second and third reading? All right.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye. All right, now we need a motion to approve ordinance 2025-27.
Motion.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember McMinn?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooke?
Yes.
Councilmember Rubel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
And Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Order 2025-27 has been approved. Thank you, counsel. Next on the agenda is ordinance 2025-28. If you'll read the title, please.
An ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance 2024-26, clarifying the duties of the city council members of, for the city of Ward, Arkansas, establishing a salary of the city council members for the city of Ward, Arkansas, and for other purposes.
Entertain a motion to put this on its first reading? In a minute. We have.
Motion.
Who has any public input on this ordinance? Okay, thank you.
Motion.
We have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
And a second. Roll call, please. Y'all keep me in line. Thank you very much.
Um, Councilmember Brooke?
Yes.
Councilmember Rubel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember McMinn?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-28 has been approved on its first reading. I entertain a motion to suspend the rules for second and third reading? A motion? And a second. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2025-28.
Motion.
A motion second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Rubel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember McMinn?
Yes.
And Councilmember Brooke?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-28 has been approved. Thank you very much, counsel. Next on the agenda is ordinance 2025-29. Would you read the title, please?
An ordinance amending ordinance 2024-27, prescribing a change in the rates to be charged for water, wastewater, and other services and fees rendered by the water and sewer system of the city of Ward, Arkansas, and prescribing other matters relating thereto.
Counsel, this is our annual rate increase by COLA, so it's going up 2.8%, which is what COLA is across the board. I entertain a motion to put this on its first reading?
Motion.
We have a second?
Second.
Public comment? Any counsel comment? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember McMinn?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooke?
Yes.
And Councilmember Rubel?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-29 has been approved on its first reading. I entertain a motion to suspend a second and a third readings?
Motion.
A motion with a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Any opposed? Sure Mr. Brooke opposing? Entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 2025-29 with a, in the, in the ordinance, it talks about the rate increase will be the first water bill cycle in the new year, except for individual fees, and then we'll start at the first year. I entertain a motion to adopt?
Motion.
A motion with a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember McMinn?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooke?
No.
Councilmember Rubel?
Yes.
And Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-29 has been approved. Thank you, counsel. Next on the agenda is resolution 2025-53. Read the title, please.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and/or city clerk to accept the Arkansas Energy Office Small Cities and Counties Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant.
Counsel, this is a project we've been working on for a while. This is a $200,000 grant from the state to do the items that are listed in the, in the resolution. There's still potential probability, I've been told, of another $234,000 grant from Metro Plan's Energy Office to help pay for this. Will be out roughly $34,000.
Make a motion to approve?
We have a motion. We have a second? Any public input? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is my mayor's report. SARS IV, we're just waiting for our doc to proceed. It was in limbo for a while because of the, the government shutdown because there's federal money involved. But we're still just waiting for that process to process through. On SARS V, we're waiting for authorization to bid the project, the wastewater rehab. We had a public meeting. We're attended by five people. We now have about 20 easements remaining. We'll, we're steady trying to work on those and get those done so we can get this project going. The water tank rehab is near completion. I think they did the testing day. Is that right, Bruce? Okay, testing day, waiting for the back T samples to come back. And once those come back good, then we're good to go. The street aid project, that should be coming up in December. We're still waiting for the LED replacement project proposed at Metro Plan and the proposed from AEDC for the ADA upgrades for City Hall. The HVAC project, we just talked about, the cost is there, and the street overlay project, we had a bid opening